Good evening, welcome to the 2016 Scottsboro Municipal Runoff Election Political Forum and Mayoral Debate. My name is Chad Gorman, I will be your moderator for tonight's event. This event is presented by WWIC Radio, The Daily Sentinel, the Greater Jackson County Chamber of Commerce, and the Scottsboro Electric Power Board. We want to thank Principal Brad Dudley, Scottsboro High School, and his staff here for hosting tonight's event. Before we get started, we would like to ask that everyone please stand as Scottsboro High School student Julia Will leads us into the floor.
So, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Julia. During this six o'clock hour, we're going to meet the candidates dying for the Scottsboro City Board of Education. For place one, two candidates in today's and Tuesday's runoff will be Mitzi Gaddis and Patricia Cobb Stewart. For place three, the two candidates will be Darryl Eustace and Jason Allen Williams. Prior to the start of this hour, each candidate drew a number to determine the order in which they would speak. A total of sixteen questions will be asked during this hour, with four questions assigned to each candidate. We will begin by giving each candidate two minutes for a short introduction, and then we'll begin the question and answer portion. Our first candidate in the Scottsboro City Board of Education is Ms. Mitzi Gaddis.
Hello, my name is Mitzi Collins Gaddis, and I'm a candidate for the Scottsboro City Board of Education, place two. I'm a graduate of Scottsboro High School, that would have been back in 1972, but I've lived here all my life. My parents were Ray and Millie Collins. I had two sisters, Nancy Gardner of Florence and Jennifer Hope of Scottsboro. After graduating from high school, I married my high school sweetheart, Brady Gaddis, and we moved to Florence, and I attended and graduated from the University of North Alabama with a BS degree in Special Education, English, and Speech and Trauma, and a master's degree in Special Education and Administration. I later went on to earn my EDS in Special Education. My husband and I have three children, adult children, Emily Grafer, Daniel Gaddis, and John Gaddis, all of Scottsboro. We have four grandmothers who attend Scottsboro City Schools.
Are you good? Just so that folks in the audience, if you don't know, we do have a timekeeper up front. We've got Mr. Parks and Mr. Keller are going to keep our time. Our candidates are very well aware of that, so if you're lucky, they're getting it.
Hi, I'm Patricia Cobb Stewart, and I'm running for the City Board of Education. I'm married to Gary Stewart, and we have three children. Nana Stewart is a sophomore at Auburn University, Emma Stewart, who's a senior here at Scottsboro High School, Thomas Stewart, who's a fifth grader at Collins. My mother was Pat Cobb, she was the counselor here at the high school for a number of years, and a lot of you may know her. I grew up going to the high school and helping out at school all my life. We are members of the First United Methodist Church, where I've taught Sunday School, Bible School, youth and children's groups, and helped start the Children's Place Daycare. After receiving a degree in accounting from Auburn, I went to the University of Alabama School of Law, and then I came home and began to practice law. After many years of working with children and youth at the church and through scouts, I felt it was time to become a voice for them through the school board. I feel that as a parent of children in the system, and the many years of fundraising and volunteering, as well as growing up as a child and educator in this system, that I'm in a unique position to understand the needs of the school board. If elected, I will be a voice for parents, teachers, administrators, and most importantly, all the children of Scottsboro, not just mine. I respectfully ask for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate, the Scottsboro City Board of Education, is Mr. Darryl Eustace.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Darryl Eustace, and I'm running for the Scottsboro City School Board, and that's place three. I'm currently on the board, and I serve as the board's president. My wife is Sandy Eustace, used to be Sandy Munnick, we've been married twenty-seven years, and we lived here for those twenty-seven years. We both grew up in the county, and it makes sense when we got married. We have three children, Cherise, Emily, and Landon. Cherise is twenty-four, Emily's twenty-one, and Landon is fifteen, so we've had children in this school system for a very long time, and we'll still have children in the system, at least Landon, until 2019. They've been here 2019, Landon, until today. In my educational background, my work history, I was a paramedic for about twenty-five years, and then while raising a family with three children, and with the support of my wife, I went back to law school while working full-time. So I was able to complete law school, and I started down in 2007, and since that time, I've been serving here as a lawyer in the city of Scottsboro. I have a bachelor's degree in public safety administration, I have a master's degree in business administration, and a doctorate degree in law. My purpose here is to continue to make the Scottsboro City Board of Education an excellent place to get their education, through whatever means that might be done, whether it's the academic background, the extracurricular or co-curricular activities that go with it, all of those are included. So I ask that you put me back on the board for another term, so that I can continue to do that. I thank you.
Good evening, I'm Jason Williams, I'm currently running for City Board, place three. I've got two wonderful children, Trenton and Talon, that are both here in Scottsboro High School, one's a freshman, one's a senior, married to Amanda Williams. She's the owner of Lucy Ray Boot Beer in town. I've got a high school education, but I've got a, you know, when I graduated, I went straight to work. I've got a hard work ethic, that's all I've ever known, is work, work hard. Good things come if you work hard. You know, I've been involved with football, baseball, if it's just walking through the parking lot picking up trash at any school, wherever I go. I just want you to, you know, keep me in mind next season. Thank you. Mr. Williams.
We will now begin with the question and answer segment. We will begin with candidate number two. Candidates, you will have two minutes for your response. And all the questions are sealed, so if you hear some written, that's maybe going to resemble, so candidate number two, you can hold up the place. Ms. Gaddis. Why? This is wild though, right, Greg?
Yes, it is.
This is wild, this is great. This is real wild right here. Okay, Ms. Stewart, why do you specifically want to be elected to serve as a member of the Scottsboro Board of Education?
Because I feel with my background that I am in a unique position. I grew up helping out, as you say, at the high school with my mother. Mr. Collins is actually, Mitzi's father is actually the one who got my mother teaching at the high school. So you can, she can blame me, it's her dad, for me being here, because that's when we moved to Scottsboro. But I always have been around school. When I came back from law school, it went a couple of months before I started working with the youth at church. I've always had a heart for children, and not just my children, that was before I ever had children. When I helped start the daycare, I did not have children, I'm planning on children. I've always worked with youth, I've always worked with children, and I have a heart for teachers. I've always been around teachers, and I feel like with my accounting background and my legal education, that I can contribute and give back to this community by being on the school board.
Thank you. Candidate number three, Darryl Eustace, will be next. Mr. Eustace, please listen carefully to the following list, I will read it twice, then discuss from this list what you believe are your top three priorities for students in this school system will be. Here's the list: teacher units, athletics, school facilities, academics, curriculum, technology, fine arts, vocational classes, transportation, child nutrition, extracurricular activities, and graduation rate. That's a question. Who wrote that? So I'll run it one more time, just to go there. Teacher units, athletics, school facilities, academics, curriculum, technology, fine arts, vocational classes, transportation, child nutrition, extracurricular activities, and graduation rate. And I was supposed to pick two of them? You were supposed to pick three. Okay. I did well just to remember. Here's the thing, out of that list, a lot of those crossover, as a matter of fact, most of all of those crossover, you end up with basically three categories, and you take the whole list. You end up with the teaching portion of it and the teacher units, which has to do with allocation of resources. You have the academic side, and you also mentioned the athletic side, but then there are also other extra and co-curricular activities, such as fine arts and other things that come in. So that to me is the academic pool as a whole. And frankly, I'm not sure I remember everything else in there, but I think it had to do with the instructional support side of it. So that would be my three categories, that all those things melt into. The first and foremost, well, you have to feed them, the children's side of the C and F, which is the nutritional part. Yes, we have to feed them, simple as that, okay? We have to feed them, including instructors that are defined by the federal government, unfortunately, which a lot of you know that that's not often a very, it's a healthy meal, it's not a very filling meal, especially for people who engage in athletics and stuff. The most important out of that, though, is education, okay? Now, education comes from not only the academic side, it also comes from the athletic side. All of my children have done well in education, academics-wise and athletic-wise, so I support both sides of that. You need a well-rounded student. Also, that comes in, if they're not into athletics, that can come through the fine arts and the other co-curricular activities. So what can we do to improve that, you know, and support all of those? Frankly, that is too big a question with that long list that I can answer in one minute. All I can tell you is, I support all of those, have supported all of those, and will continue to support all of those. It's simply too large a question to answer in this period of time. Thank you, that was quite a list, thank you. Candidate number four, Mr. Jason Williams. Mr. Williams, technology is clearly the pathway to the future of education. Expound on whether you as a board member would support or oppose a virtual curriculum or a virtual school for students.
You know, technology's big in this world today. I want to go back to when my son didn't set up the grade in the engineering class, where they built a car, you had to go so many feet and stop all around. You know, for children this age to do that, that's big. But yes, I was born, technology today is huge.
Thank you, sir. Candidate number one, I hope you did it right, you guys, you two straightened out this time. Ms. Mitzi Gaddis. Your question: List the top three subject areas that you feel that you feel need to be expanded during your term as a board member. For example, it could be algebra, history, agro-science, or something else not mentioned.
Well, I think in the world that we're in today, Jason's question, technology, is very important, and I do think we need to expand that, because our children are quite capable of using it better than most adults, including myself, but the world is just, is moving in that direction. Also, I think math and, the math and science, and I would kind of lump that together in that those fields are very open as far as jobs, job availability. And, you know, reading, basic reading is a must. We see that, I've seen that through the elementary schools. I've had the opportunity to teach every grade, and reading is a stumbling block when you get older, if you don't have the basic foundation in it. And I think our schools are doing a great job of including AR reading, and some of the curriculum that's been added to, you know, we've tried to incorporate reading skills into all the subject areas, history, science, you know, we use reading in all of those areas, and we've started using critical thinking skills that are related to reading for those other subjects. So that's a priority.
Thank you. Now for our second round of questions for our candidates. First answer, the second round will be Darryl Eustace. Mr. Eustace, the majority of any education budget is allocated to employee salaries and benefits. Based upon your knowledge of the Scottsboro City School System, name and discuss three areas that any non-allocated funds should be productively used and in order of their reports. You need to find non-allocated funds?
No, I would say you need this probably not dedicated to salaries and benefits.
I would love to find some non-allocated funds. Frankly, almost every, well, every penny that comes in is allocated to something. The education system right now is far underfunded. As far as, he needs to write, the majority of all monies that come into the education system, about eighty-five to eighty-eight percent of it is spent on personnel, spent on people, okay? The last time I was up here, I said the monthly expenditures for running the school system was about $1.7 million. It's now budgeted after our last budgetary since September at $1.8 million. About eighty-five percent of that is personnel. The reason of the increase is, you know, the education employees, teachers, and otherwise receive the legislative salary increase. Along with that salary increase, then comes the expenditure to the school. Also, the insurance went up. So when you add the insurance that went up, and you add the salaries that went up, and all that, it increased about a hundred thousand. So our eighty-five percent of that won't lie to you. Now, the other portions left is all, it's already allocated. There are other things that it's useful. As far as, if we had more money, what would we do? Frankly, I would like to see us go back to the allocated funds. Look, I was frankly, we have some classrooms that have too many kids, you know, twenty-six classrooms, and a third, fourth grade setting is a lot for a teacher to deal with, instead of twenty-six students in a classroom for one teacher. So if I had some unallocated funds, frankly, I think I'd just reallocate it back to the teachers, and I think that's worth it, they use enough. Thank you, sir. Next, we have candidate number four, Mr. Jason Williams. Mr. Williams, this question has multiple parts, and you need to repeat some of them. Anytime you need to repeat, I'll ask him, I'll be glad to do that for any candidates. Posting all job vacancies is the law in the state of Alabama. If elected to serve on this board, will you be committed to the following? To make sure that all positions are posted, to review applications for top hot candidates for each position, to commit to hiring the best applicant regardless of their friendship, affiliation, or associate, or other associations with any member of the school system, and would you insist that the results of all conducted interviews are ranked and included in determination of how this ranking was determined?
Yes, that's a must. You know, first of all, you know, who, the better person for the job. I guess going back and watching my dad through the years, you know, he's a businessman, and watching him do the hiring and firing of people, you hire the best, you fire the worst, that's the way it works. But yes, and one part of that was, repeat that one more time.
Would you, and if you're elected, would you vow to make sure that all positions are posted, you would review the applications for the top hot candidates for each position, commit to hiring the best applicant regardless of their affiliations?
Yes, that part there, you know, if somebody's candidate, you know, we shouldn't just hire the other candidates. You know, that goes back, hey, if they're suitable for the job, they're the best one for the job, yes, they'll be hired. That's actually a cross statement, but yes, the posting of the jobs, yes.
Ms. Gaddis, in light of recent terrorist actions throughout the United States, do you believe that any additional safety precautions should be taken for the Scottsboro City Schools? And if so, please discuss that.
Well, I retired a year ago after forty years of service, and in those forty years, there have been things that have come up. Now, it was not a terrorist attack or anything to that level, but I believe that the police officers that work at the schools have given great directions, and spoken to all the faculty and we to our students of the precautionary things that we need to do in case such an event happened. We have drills on that a couple of times a year, at least, and, you know, we look at those drills and see where we fell short, and made accommodations for that, reworked it, decided what we needed to do, because the most important thing to any community is the safety of their children. And I think we took steps to work on that, be it terror, you know, a violent act, or be it tornadoes. You know, the school works on that diligently, and we have plans that we have put on the doors, so that should there be a substitute there, they know the route to take, and where they should go, and the students are aware of this. So while I think there's always room for improvement, and welcome the professionals to come in and redirect, or, which I think they're doing, I think our schools, I think we've worked hard to provide that safety.
Thank you. Candidate number two, Ms. Patricia Cobb Stewart. Ms. Stewart, this is a scenario, it's probably better than a Williams, but it's a scenario, a good friend of yours calls to complain about a situation regarding his or her daughter or son and a teacher that occurred that morning in school. This person asks you to discuss the situation with the principal. How would you as a board member handle this situation?
Oh, excuse me. A friend of mine called and asked me to talk to the principal, that basically the...
Yeah, there's been a situation with a friend of yours and their child with a teacher, and this person wants you to call and speak to that principal?
That's not what the board members are supposed to do. If a friend of mine called me with a situation, obviously I'm going to listen, but I also would tell them they need to talk to the teacher first. If they don't feel like they're getting any satisfaction there, then you go to the principal, and if you don't feel like you're getting any satisfaction there, then you would go up the chain of command, which would be the superintendent. It is not my responsibility or my place as a board member to put pressure on a principal to do something that I think that they should do, whether I agree with the parent or not, that's not my place.
Thank you. Now we'll have the third. Mr. Williams, what is your position regarding employee promotion from within the school system as opposed to hiring from outside the school system, when candidates from both appear equally qualified?
Hiring within. I think we keep it in here, keep it inside. I know coming up through everywhere outward, you know, everybody's always hired from within, and I just, I think it's, if both parties are equal, I'll say hire Liam.
Thanks, sir. Candidate number one, Ms. Mitzi Gaddis. Ms. Gaddis. Without saying both is your answer, which is more important in a school system, teachers or administration?
Well, teachers work directly with the students and provide the academic knowledge that they receive, so if you, if you take the two and separate them, the school cannot run without teachers, and their job is paramount in the, in the education of any student. Now, I think administrators are important and necessary, but if you had to choose one, those that work directly with a student would definitely be most important in the academic process.
Thank you. As a former administrator, I'd have to agree with you. Candidate number two, Ms. Patricia Cobb Stewart. Your question reads: List three facilities that you feel should be built, improved, or expanded during your terms as school board member.
Three buildings or facilities?
Three facilities that you feel should be built, improved, or expanded during your term.
Well, number one that I can think of would be this particular auditorium. We don't really have an auditorium where our band can play except at Collins, which sometimes floods. It's a wonderful facility, that's where I went to high school, it works great, but it does flood. It's hard to say that anyone, there's so many options there that it's hard to say. I know Brownwood, at this point, I believe, is the oldest school. Their gymnasium, I have been in, and it is small, so that could use some help. That's about, those are the two things I can think of that would be the most important.
Okay, thank you. Candidate number three, Mr. Darryl. Mr. Eustace, statements have been made that the school system spends too much money on salaries and benefits. Is this your position, and if so, then please identify areas in the central office, the schools, and the support services that you feel, that you feel could be eliminated. support services you can feel, that you feel could be eliminated.
I don't think we spend too much money on salary benefits. I think sometimes we spend money in a scenario or with, you know, employees where we're not getting the most utility out of our money. So, perhaps, and this is an ongoing thing, this is not, this is going to be whether it's me doing it or it's one of the other candidates doing it, whether it was the past year or future year. Anytime you're dealing with personnel, you're always going to have issues that you're going to have to address. You're always going to have employees that you don't think you're getting your money towards out of it. That's life, okay? And I agree with that, and we have some of those. I think we're in better shape now. I think we give more utility for our dollar now than we have in the past. But there's something to be done there. But, and do I think we spend too much on it? No, I don't. Because frankly, just look, if you want to get the best people, you're gonna have to spend the money. It's a competitive world. People who over the Georgia, bought off the teeth simply because they can get a better wage over there, they can get better benefits over there. Now, we spend a lot of money on people. We do, we spend a lot of money on people. But if you're gonna spend money, people and primarily teachers are your number one resource. And you've got to spend the money to keep the best people. Are some people overpaid? Yes. But you have to deal with those on an individual basis. It's not necessarily that they're overpaid. It may be that they are not doing the job that they need to do to earn that dollar. And that's just something that we have to address on a number one basis and an individual basis.
Thanks, sir. This guest, your question reads, how do you see academics and athletics and other extracurricular activities working together to enhance the total school program for the Scottsboro City Schools?
Well, I think the state started that process by requiring C average in order to participate in athletics. So, I think they started the process in order to have a well-rounded student. You want students to make good grades, but to participate in team sports. Team sports provides character building. You know, you learn to work as a group. And here, we have wonderful people who were coaching, who set great examples for our students and encourage them and motivate them and build self-confidence building. I know we have so many athletic programs and extracurricular activities that these children can feel successful in. It doesn't have to be this sport or that sport. I've encouraged it for my own children. My children have participated in band, cheerleading, football, baseball, basketball, track, cross-country, all of those sports. I've got them worn out tires to prove it. But the lessons they learn from being involved in those sports added to who they are and their appreciation for teamwork and getting along with others and the friendships they built. I know that academics is the priority and it should be, but in order to well-round, have a well-rounded student, we have to encourage them to participate with their peers.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart, your question. List two areas that you believe as a board of education member, you can make a significant difference in the lives of children.
I think that with my accounting background, I can help look through the finances and maybe look to see where we can shave some money off. I also believe that with my legal background, some other programs I've been involved with, that not every kid is going to respond to athletics. Not every kid is a rock star student. But every kid needs a place. I think there are other programs, other people that we can get to volunteer and come in and work with students on a one-to-one basis or in a group that will facilitate their becoming strong adults.
Thank you. Mr. Eustace. Outsourcing the employment of non-certified personnel eliminates the superintendent and board of education members' ability to screen, check, meet, recommend, or vote on that particular employee. The contracted company will interview, select, hire, and notify the school system of the hiring. This outsourcing causes less money to be paid to the teacher's retirement system. Over time, this will cause the TRS to have insufficient funds to pay all the retirees. What is your position on outsourcing personnel positions? And would you support a repeal of the current board's prior decision to outsource non-certified positions?
Well, I think if you look at the voting record, that kind of states my position, or if you were present at the meeting or watched any of the videos that's out there, I voted against the outsourcing. However, I would say that I'm not a hundred percent against it. I was for outsourcing on a very limited basis. I probably won personally started that conversation, but I ended up voting against it because I felt like it got too broad. It went too broad and too deep. On a very limited basis, first of all, it doesn't always affect TRS as was stated. The TRS being the teacher's retirement system or the retirement system of Alabama, which is TRS and ERS combined. Some of the people who are being hired by an outsourcing company are people who are retirees of the school system. So, when you hire someone who is already retired, but can come back and then work as a retired employee under a contracted system, it does not have a negative effect on the retirement system. It does, however, allow you to employ a good employee that has already been vetted and already proven and allows them to come in basically as a part-time employee. So, should, I think it should be repealed. You know, I would support that because I voted against it strongly. However, at the same time, if it was brought back, as I suggested before, in a limited basis, then I probably would support that again. But I think my respect for that as it stands...
Thank you. And now, candidate... Ms. Williams. When the previous superintendent retired, the board of education spent thousands of dollars to contract with the company to conduct a search for new superintendent. The previous two boards who dealt with superintendent vacancy conducted their own search and did their own advertising and interviewing. If a superintendent vacancy should occur during your term, would you support hiring a firm or conducting your own research? Please discuss.
I think we look at it both ways. Do an internal interview and go out and look. Maybe if there's three available, beat the top three. You know, if we can't get done, then we go out and then we go, we find somebody to, you know, look for. I personally, I would like to do it in-house. You know, we like, you know, hiring somebody from within to do another position. But yes, I would probably really do it in-house first.
Thanks, sir. We conclude our round.
As you can probably figure out, several of us, I think, up here were a little confused by the questions. So, if I sounded confused, I apologize. We've done, we've all done the best we could because none of us knew what these questions were beforehand. I do want you to think about what you want in the future. I'm ready, willing, and able to serve. This is a service. The people that serve on the board are serving. They're volunteering their time and they're working hard. I would like to offer my services and I would like to work on the school board. I ask that you consider me. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate number three, Mr. Darryl Eustace, please.
I want to thank everyone that came out tonight. A lot of you came here for the first round, and it shows that there's a lot of support for what's going on in the community, whether it be the city council, the city school board. You know, this is not an easy job. This is, I've done a lot of different things in my life. This has probably been one of the most difficult of any of the jobs that I've done. And I tell you, there have been some difficult jobs out there. But at the same time, I felt it was necessary to run for another term because I wanted to see the completion of some of the things that we started. The board right now is in a good position. It is taking a very good direction. It has made a lot of improvements, especially over the last two, three years. You know, it takes time to make changes to things that have been ongoing for several years. It takes time sometimes to take a different direction and change a culture, and a culture of excellence. And I think we've done that. And I think we're still traveling down the road and we have some more room to go. Now, one of the hardest things about this job is to tell people no. And frankly, I know I've told a lot of people out there no. And that is always, not always a popular thing to do. But I promise you is I'll take the information that's before us, make a reasonable decision, make a prudent decision. It may not be a popular decision. And as people often ask me, you know, what about this and what about that? And sometimes we prepare for the answer that you'll give because I can't make everyone happy. However, I will do my very best to make sure that the students, and that's what we're really worried about, not everybody, that the students get the best attention that they possibly can.
Thanks, sir.
First of all, I want to thank y'all for coming out. I really want to thank you for supporting me in the primary. Because y'all can tell we're, you know, I'm nervous. I don't know about these other people, but I am nervous. You know, it takes a lot to stand up there in front of people. I, you know, I haven't been elected. If so, I'm ready. I'm ready to jump in with both feet, dig deep, and help everybody out. Remember me, Tuzi? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. See, what's the good thing I'm in county? Ms. Missy Gass.
Well, I get to be last to play my case. The first thing I too want to do is to thank all of those who supported me. And those of you who didn't, I hope you'll reconsider. I've been knocking on doors and working hard, and if I haven't made it to your house, keep looking for me. My husband and family and I are working on it. My forty years of teaching has given me great insight into what teachers' concerns and needs are. And the thousands of parental meetings I've had with individual parents who have expressed their concerns and their needs, I've listened to carefully and worked with teams of other teachers in order to help that child reach academic success or to solve the problems that he or she might have had. Years ago, we worked hard to have an elected board as opposed to an appointed board. One of those reasons is so that we could have input into our board members. I believe in complete transparency, and I would work hard toward that goal. And I think many of those on the board too feel that way. It's just that we need to be transparent so that the community understands our positions. And it help, it gives them the opportunity to have their input. I'm a hard worker, and I'm passionate about the things I believe in. And I believe that education is so important. And I intend to use the knowledge that I have, the experiences that I have, and I ask you to put that confidence and give me your vote on October 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to thank these candidates for the Scottsboro City Board of Education and for their sincere heartfelt interest that you've given in both this, this forum and the previous forum. So, I wish you all...